Hello, everyone, as you're entering this meeting. Welcome to the July 27th Planning Commission Meeting. I am Chair Boyle and am happy to have you all here. Let's start by doing the roll call, please.
Yes, Chair Boyle?
Here.
I'm sorry. Vice Chair, Bryce Chirr- Brody?
Present.
Commissioner Dustin?
Here.
Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Alternative Commissioner Kazaki?
Here.
Alternative Commissioner Chow?
Here.
And then Commissioner Chang is absent.
Thank you. Typically, at this time, we would do a flag salute since we are all in separate areas without a flag present. We have been foregoing that during our Zoom Planning Commission meetings. Let's see, the agenda has been posted 72 hours in advance at the San Marino City Hall, the San Marino Public Library, the San Marino Recreation Department, as well as the San Marino website to give everyone ample time to look at what is on our agenda and the various items. Each commissioner has received the plans and staff comments and has reviewed every item on the agenda and visited each site. The general order for hearing will, for each case, will be as follows. Staff will discuss the case and provide background information and a recommendation. I will ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal. The hearing will then be open to the public, and I'll ask for comments for, against, or about this project. We will take comments. I always repeat this line, but obviously, everyone is from the virtual world. So just, if you do want to make a comment, you can either write something in our chat feature, or there is also an opportunity to raise your hand, and we will see you and call on you at that time. In all cases, please give your name and address. When speaking on an item, please do not repeat comments previously made, but rather acknowledge agreement with previous speakers. However, please present any additional comments. At the conclusion of the public comments, the applicant will have a chance to respond, and no further comments from the public will be accepted. I will then ask for comments from each of the commissioners. Most of the cases will involve variances, conditional use permits, and/or design review. The commission will discuss and act on each one individually. In each case, variances will be considered first, then conditional use permits, and finally, design review. If there is no motion for approval or denial, the Planning Commission has the option of continuing the application to a future meeting. In the event of a denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during deliberations that will be useful in resubmitting an application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the originally approved design or paying a fine to the city of San Marino, equal to the greater 5% of the project valuation or $2,500, and then resubmitting the changes made to the project to the commission. It is also important to understand that there is a 15-day appeal period after action has been taken for the applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. The commission will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, it will take them out of order if there's a large number of people here on one item. That item might be taken ahead of others as a courtesy to those present. The commission will not start a new item after 11:00 p.m. Items not heard will be carried over to an adjourned meeting or the next regular meeting. At this time, I would like to see if there are any public comments that are not included in this evening's agenda. Seeing none, I will then move on to Agenda Item Number One, and may we all please have the staff report.
Yes. So for Item Number One is Designer View Case 21-78 or 970 Sherwood Road. The applicant proposes to remove the existing wood shingles and install the certainty landmark TL in Shenandoah color on the existing residence, as well as the detached garage. This project requires one designer view action as the existing home does not have the required condition of having existing composition shingle. The project was first heard before the Design Review Committee on April 6, 2022, and at the meeting, the Design Review Committee voted to deny the project. The applicant then applied for an appeal on April 20th and paid the required fee within the 15-day appeal period and formally appealed it to the Planning Commission as it's before you today. And as part of this appeal, they also submitted a supplemental document, Attachment Number 11, addressing their questions and concerns and additional documentation they wish that the Planning Commission were to review and receive. This project was identified on our citywide historic resource survey as a potential historic resource under the Oak Knoll San Marino Residential Historic District. The Oak Knoll San Marino Residential Historic District doesn't identify roofing materials as a district contributor or a distinct characteristic of the neighborhood. And therefore, as part of Attachment Number Six and Seven, staff feels that the proposed roofing change won't be an issue for the potential historic resource. The neighborhood input letters were seven to one, seven that did not object, and one that was a recusal as a DRC member lived within the legal neighborhood. And as far as the findings, this project requires that the typical four designer view findings must be met. The first finding being that the proposed structure is compatible with the neighborhood, and staff has met this finding. I would like to notate that the house at 910 Sherwood Road and 957 Afton Road have composition shingle that are within the general area and the same block as this proposed property. Finding Number Two, that the proposed structure is designed and will be developed in a manner which balances a reasonable expectation of privacy of persons residing on contiguous properties with the reasonable expectations of the applicants to develop their property with the restrictions of this code. Finding Number Three, that the case of a, in the case of a building addition, the proposal is compatible within this existing building, which includes the roof lines. For Finding Two and Three, the project is not applicable. For Finding Number Four, that the ability, that the colors and materials are consistent and match the existing building or structure. Following that, there are four. We consider them other findings that the designer view or any hearing body shall consider when raised by the applicant, which is Number One, fire, wind, and earthquake safety. Number Two, structural integrity. Number Three, the extent of the roof, if it's visible from the public view or by neighbors. And Number Four, the ability of the proposed roofing material to successfully dispose of rainwater for that particular house. In conclusion of staff's recommendation, we do recommend approval for the proposal, and would like to notate that Number Two references an attached resolution, which is inaccurate, as we didn't attach a resolution in this case as we are looking at if the Planning Commission wants to request staff to draft an approval resolution or a denial resolution, which we would bring forward at the next Planning Commission meeting, whichever the vote goes. I'm available to answer any questions, and the applicants are also online to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Excuse me, are there any questions for staff?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Dustin?
Thank you. I just was curious, in my reading up for this, I didn't see natural wood shake or natural wood shingle on the pre-approved roofing materials list. And I was just curious why they wouldn't be listed the same as natural slate. And then further, I would just make a suggestion that if natural wood shake and shingle are listed, there should probably be conditions that specify a product produced by a member of the Cedar Shake and Shingle Bureau that sets standards for fire retardant treatment.
Um, yes.
Actually, Camilla, this is a Cedar real quick. A couple of things. Commissioner Dustin, thank you for the question. We don't know the reason for why those items on the pre-approved list. If the Planning Commission as a whole will like to make amendments to that list, you can obviously direct staff to speak with the city council and have them consider whether they would like to make any amendments to the pre-approved list. I, in brief, before I started here, there was some discussion about there being some previously held discussions, and I believe it was at the city council level, in terms of potentially making some amendments. We can revisit that. But at this point, we don't, current staff doesn't know why one item or another item are not in the pre-approved list. And just a clarification, in terms of the resolutions, that would be for consideration, one would be either to uphold the DRC decision or to approve the, the request for the, for the composition shingles.
So if this particular applicant were taking out a building permit to put natural wood shingle, sawn shingle, which they have currently on the roof, they would still need to go through the design review process because that product is not on the pre-approved list?
Um, no, so our code states that applicants or residences are allowed to replace what they currently have. So if they have existing wood shingle, we can approve it. It has to be Class A installation and Class A shingle itself, so double Class A. And then if they have existing wood shingle or wood shake, we could approve it. But for instance, if a home didn't have wood shake or wood shingle, and they would like to now put it on, then that does need to go before the designer view. That's never the case, but yeah.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
May I?
Yeah, Commissioner Wright.
Thank you. My memory, which we all know is failing. But we, to our director's point, we did have something that came before us, and there was a lot of debate about it, whether to send it to council with a recommendation or not. And I thought it had to do with allowing people to once again put wood shake on their roofs, whether it had been wood or not. And again, it's something that we never heard back about what happened when it went to council. So I do think that was something that has been revisited recently. But I don't know what happened. So something to just maybe look into. Does anybody know?
I remember that as well, that we had a very large discussion. In fact, I believe Fire Chief Rueda came into our meeting to, so that we could ask, I think we continued it specifically so that Fire Chief Rueda could come onto the call for us to ask very specific questions.
Yes, exactly. But again, I don't think we were told. It might have been when a change of regime, that we were told what council has done with that. Just so something that would be, if we could hear back from you, Director, because you don't have enough to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. I will coordinate with Fire Chief Rueda and try to find out and do some research to see where this left off and what needs to be done to move forward. So thank you both for your comments.
Are there any other questions for staff on this Agenda Item? I don't see any, so I will now ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal.
Hi, can you hear me online?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for your time. My name is Lars, this is Michelle. We moved in just over a year ago. We knew at the time we bought the house that the roof was going to need to be replaced as soon as possible. Sure enough, when the rainy season came, we started to get some pretty major damage in the, in the family room, kind of wetness in the ceiling and water damage and so on. So immediately when we, when we moved in, we started the process of getting a new roof. We applied to the Designer View Committee. It took a few months to get a hearing that happened in April. Unfortunately, after the damage it happened, but we got that hearing, which was great. Unfortunately, our application was denied. And this was surprising to us because in the same session, there were two almost identical requests to convert wood shake to composition shingle. One of them was even exactly the same color. Those were both ultimately approved, and as was denied. That there were, it was a vote of three to one, and all three of those voting against said that the reason that they were denying ours but allowing the others was that our house was part of this potential historic district. And what is clear from the staff report, as Camilla mentioned, is that the nature of the wood roof is not a defining characteristic of the potential historic district. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. But this is the fundamental reason that we would like the commission to reconsider the decision. We think that it was just based on flawed logic about what constitutes the historic district and what doesn't. In addition to this, the certainty landmark TL that we're proposing, we think is superior to woods on all the metrics that matter, cost, fire safety, maintainability, and durability. And we think that fire safety, we all know that fire is going to be increasingly prevalent in California. And we think that this is something that is very important to us. We, Michelle is actually pregnant with our first child. We think that safety of our family is very important, but also that of the larger neighborhood. So if you'll give me the time, I just want to elaborate a little bit on those points. So all three of the committee members said that the reason that they were denying our proposal was the potential historic district. And I'll just cite the staff report, which says wood shake roofs are not listed as a character-defining feature for the contributor or for the district according to the Historic Resource Survey's DPR forms. A change in roofing material that simulates the look of wood shake would not result in a substantial adverse change to a potential historic resource, and the proposed material in the Shenandoah color produces a visual appearance similar to the existing roof. So contrary to the committee's decision, staff found that the proposed roofing change is compatible with the neighborhood and that the colors and materials are consisting with the existing building. So we think that it was, it was odd to us that the committee was going against their city's own staff report in thinking that it was, it was important that we stay with wood for this historic district. And so we'd like the Planning Commission to reconsider this decision. That brings me on to why we think the composition shingle is better. And what we found is that wood roofs are at least double the cost of the composition shingle. And it was clear in the Design Review Committee that all of the committee members were very strong that we should stay with wood and that all the other applicants would stay with wood. But this is really imposing a financial hardship that we frankly can't afford. I mean, we, we bought at a time when house prices are high in San Marino. They're still going up, and we did that because we want to raise a family here and move to a place with great schools. We thought that was worth it, but we had no idea that we would be having to pay $80,000 to $90,000 for a roof, for a particular material of roof that we think is not, is not worth that. So we've got quotes for both composition shingle and wood shake from the same contractor. We've done that three times now, and each time, the composition shingle, or the wood shake, sorry, is two to five times, three or four times more expensive. This was consistent with what the other applicants in our session found. One of them quoted $80,000 for a roof. That's consistent with our $82,800 that we have in our tall roofing quote that's attached to the materials that you have. Now, we've noticed that in the San Marino City Code, it says that the DRC or the Planning Commission shall consider the cost of construction materials when raised by the applicant. But that was expressly not what the committee, sorry, the, yeah, the committee did in this case. In fact, committee member Batni said that she just didn't believe that wood roofs cost $18,000 and knew that, and her reason for saying that was that she had recently had one done for $30,000. Now, this obviously was interesting to us. And so with the help of staff, we were able to reach out to that committee member and ask for the contact information for that particular contractor. We reached out to that contractor. We got a quote back actually this morning, and that quote was $90,000. So I don't know where the committee member was getting the $30,000 from. Maybe it was before the pandemic. All of the contractors are saying that getting a hold of wood is extremely difficult. But certainly, the situation we're in now is that a wood roof is something that we frankly can't afford. And there is no reason for us to go to that length of financial hardship, given what I'm about to say on the other reasons why the composition shingle is superior. So that brings me to fire safety. And this was something, again, that caused a bit of confusion in the committee meeting. As Camilla stated, the committee must consider fire safety when raised by the applicant. And what's clear from all of the investigation that we've done is that wood roofs are inherently less fire-safe than composition shingle roofs. A composition shingle roof is not flammable. It does not provide fuel for a fire. A fire, a wood roof, even if treated with fire retardant material, is something that provides fuel to the fire. Now, there are different fire ratings, Class A, Class B, and so on. And a wood roof by itself can only achieve a Class B fire rating. What that means is that it itself will catch fire and provide fuel to the fire. You can bring the assembly up to Class A by putting a fire-resistant material underneath it. But that doesn't mean the roof isn't on fire. Those ratings are based on how long it takes for the fire to reach into the house below, basically how long you have to evacuate, evacuate you or your family. So by putting this material on, you can meet San Marino's requirement of Class A. But that doesn't mean you're a safer something that just fundamentally can't catch fire. And in particular, when we look at safety of our neighborhood, you know, if our roof is on fire and our houses nearby are at danger, they are still at danger of that roof spreading, that fire on that roof spreading to the other houses, even if we have had enough time to get our family out of the house. Now, as a result of this, we, we have a letter from our neighbors, the closest neighbors are to the northeast, Jordan and Lynn Hayes. I will read their letter addressed to the Planning Commission. "We are Jordan and Lynn Hayes. Our address is 980 Sherwood Road, San Marino. Lars Blackmore and Michelle Lou live next to us. They notified that their wood roof is in poor condition, but like to replace it with composition doors in a color similar to their existing roof. We support their choice of material. Their choice of material will affect the safety of our home and neighborhood. Given the increasing threat of fires in our area, we strongly prefer that they re-roof using composition doors, which we understand is inherently more fire-resistant than wood." Thank you, Jordan and Lynn Hayes. "Our contractors agree." There's a letter in your materials explaining that even if fire-rated wood roofs are not as fire-resistant as composite shingle roofs such as certainty, and he would not recommend a wood roof for his own installation or any of his client's properties. And finally, we looked into the wildfire information network community of practice. Same situation, an exterior wood roof can only have a standalone Class B fire rating. And as I explained, you need to have this underlying material, but that is still not as inherently safe for something that just cannot catch fire. And then, I know I've taken a lot of your time here. The last point we have is that wood roofs just have worse durability and maintainability than the certainty landmark TL. Every single roofing contractor we've spoken to has been very clear on this point. We've submitted a letter to the commission from our contractor. I'll just read that out because I think he makes the case very well. "My name is Mark Raveed. I'm a licensed roofing contractor. I founded Top Roofing over 25 years ago with the aim to provide quality roofing services in the Los Angeles area. Having been in the roofing business for over two decades, I highly recommend using high-end composite shingles for the longevity and durability of a roof. Composite shingles can last 50 years by manufacturer specifications. Composite shingles are easy to walk on for service repairs, cleanup, and alterations. By contrast, wood shake or shingle roofs are a thing of the past. Most cities and counties disallow new installations of wood and shaking shingle roofs, and for good reason. Walking on a wood roof could break and or damage the wood tiles. Further, wood roofs are more likely to suffer wind and water damages. Significantly, wood roofs, even if fire-rated, are not as fire-resistant as composite shingle roofs. Overall, I would never install a wood roof on my property or recommend a wood roof to my clients, friends, or family. Thank you, Mark Raveed." And, you know, the numbers he gives there, 50 years for composite shingles. Our roof that is currently leaking and damaging our home is only 20 years old. So I think we can see there direct evidence of how much more durable these materials are. So that's really all I wanted to say. Just to sum up, we believe that the original decision was based on this question about whether the wood roof is important for the historic district, which staff has said is not. We believe that we want to go with what makes sense on cost, fire safety, and durability, and that has to be the proposed certainty landmark Shenandoah and not the wood roof, which the Designer View Committee was adamant that we should stay with.
No, thank you very much for your time.
I give you that.
You're muted.
I apologize for that. Commissioners, are there any other questions for the applicants?
Yes.
Yes, Vice Chair Brody?
Yeah, thank you. Have you taken a look at the certainty landmark TL in its implementation anywhere in the community?
Yeah, we submitted, I think, probably a dozen examples of it. And then there's, our next door neighbors to the south have that material. So yeah, we've, we've looked around.
Yeah, there is an example within our legal neighborhood.
Right, I'm just asking, with regard to Landmark Pro, have you considered that particular iteration on your roof?
I mean, the, the pre-approved materials list includes the certainty landmark TL and specifies the Shenandoah color. I do not believe that the Landmark Pro is on that pre-approved list.
Okay, because it is an iteration which is thicker than landmark TL, and it looks like a shake roof, where landmark TL, depending upon the, the home and the slope, it can look simply not like shake. And that is a concern that I had. And I agree with you that wood is something that we don't want to see a lot of or any of in the future. It creates problems. On the other hand, we do want to replicate the look of a wood shake, especially on a home in a historic district and a design that you have. And I don't see landmark TL falling into that category so much as landmark pro, which is substantially thicker and gives a real-life wood shake appearance. Have you considered that?
Yeah.
We were just trying to stick with what was listed on the pre-approved materials list. Because it wasn't, we didn't consider it. We wanted to definitely stick with what was, what was already pre-approved.
Yeah, and we did think that, my understanding is the TL stands for triple laminate. So we thought that that was the thickest option available.
Good thinking, but it isn't.
I'm sorry, say again.
It, I mean, I can understand why you feel that way, but it isn't. The thickest option is the pro.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if one outcome of this meeting is that, is that we have the option to proceed with the pro or the TL, and we can, you know, take a look at the pro and say, hey, this, this looks better and has all the benefits of composition shingle, then, you know, that, that would be great for us.
Hey, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Seeing none, I will now open this Agenda Item to the public. Please keep your comments to three minutes or under. And additionally, don't, we, we do request that you state your name and your address when you come forward. So is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment regarding this? Yes, Mr. Johnson? Oh, you froze, sir.
He's got his, he's muted.
He's frozen. Mr. Johnson, you are fro, if you can hear me, you are not only muted, but you also, your video has frozen. We can hear you, but your video is still frozen, but we can hear you. We can hear you, but your video is still frozen, but we can hear you.
Well, now we can.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
I can hear me. Talking about that historic district matter, I surveyed my area of the city, which is now called the the historic district of the San Marino Highlands. We're way at the east end of the city. We are, there's two hundred and nine houses in Highlands. I would guess that, I probably not guess, I would be pretty certain that seventy years ago, they were all probably wood. Wood roofed. Now it is twenty nine percent wood, sixty one percent flat tile, and nine percent composition. I think they all fit together. In the grades of composition, some are just flat rollout stuff and stuff. Other is very much looking like shingle. The, we're, San Marino's specification is one of the top grades. The.
Mr. Johnson, I'm so sorry, but you're, it's getting close to the three minutes and you keep cutting out and freezing. I believe, if I am understanding correctly, you are making a comment in support of this this roofing material.
Mr. Johnson, if you can hear us, you might want to consider turning off the video and just use the audio.
Or even possibly.
So, sorry, I'll have to look into my.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not sure how to best proceed right now.
He's back, but you're muted. Now you're frozen.
Director Figaro, should I?
Mr. Johnson, if you can hear us, if you can turn off your video, perhaps that will assist assist you in making your comments.
I show his video and his audio is on.
Yeah, he's, yeah, I mean, no.
Yeah, it's his connection. I think at this point, Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Okay, I'll just, last part. I think it was in this, my street, counting my house and the nine houses that surround it, there are two composition. One wood, four flat tile, one stone coated steel, and one Tesla tile. As far as I'm concerned, they all get along very nicely, no problems. And I think that having a mixture of materials is not bad. And the historical review that was published for San Marino does not make any nasty remarks about this. So, in short, this roofing material should be approved.
Thank you so much for your comment. Are there any other comments from our public attendees?
I don't see anybody in the chat and I haven't received any emails.
Yeah, same. So if there are no other comments, then I will now close the public portion of the meeting and the commissioners will begin to deliberate. Commissioner Dustin, let's start with you.
Okay. So I'll just give a little bit of background information first. A little over two years ago, the city council gave direction to planning staff to start exploring, expanding the materials on that pre-approved list. I believe Vice Chair Brody worked on that group with me and some city residents and city staff. Unfortunately, the COVID pandemic derailed our completion of that task. But we were reviewing several new products, including composite shingle. And my takeaway from that experience was there has been a tremendous improvement in both the aesthetics and the functionality of composite shingle products. The look of those products has improved tremendously. Functionally, they have textured dimensional products that create shading effects that are very similar to natural wood. I think you even see that in the landmark products that are on, are the certainty products that are on the list. There are products now that have photocatalytic granules that actually convert smog pollutants into water soluble ions and improve the air quality. There are products with composite materials that provide greater cooling effect for the structure than either cementaceous materials or even natural wood. You know, wood is problematic, as the applicant pointed out. It is, I don't have wood on my house because my insurer wouldn't allow it anymore. I have cementaceous tile, which is on the pre-approved list. I'm very much disappointed in the performance of that product. I've heard Mr. Johnson speak at many of our meetings and I think some of it has started to sink in. My biggest concern is, you know, I do share the concerns raised by some of the design review committee members about the historic nature of the neighborhood and that it's important that the product be true to the architectural style of the home. I'm not so, I do, I do understand that we are to take into consideration cost and fire performance. Those are not overriding concerns. It's again primarily the aesthetic visual appearance that I think we need to be concerned with. But it is difficult to get an insurer to ensure a wood roof. A class A wood roof, there's a lot of variation there depending on who is the producer of the roof and who installs it. There are some class A roofs where the retardant chemicals are pressured treated into the wood and they are warranted for the entire lifespan of the warranty to be, to retain that class A rating. Other, other wood products, it's just a surface application. And if you do not go back every three, five, seven, ten, fifteen years and reapply at some considerable expense that retardant chemical, you will not maintain that class A rating. I do believe though that there are numerous architectural styles that are potentially compatible with, and I want to differentiate here between high quality composite shingle and just sort of your run of the mill. There's the stuff that is on the pre-approved list and that we are considering to add to the pre-approved list, not the stuff that you can go buy off the shelf at Home Depot. There's a big difference. But some of the styles that are potentially compatible are colonial revival like this home, Monterey revival, ranch, Cape Cod, minimal traditional. But not every house of those styles is appropriate. And that's why I think there's a good argument to expand the use of composite shingle. But I think there is also a place to keep that in the design review process because it would be very difficult to craft language on the pre-approved list that would effectively express the aesthetic nuances that I think are involved in this. So one last comment before I tell you about this house. And I think the city needs to be careful in cases where the applicant is diligently following the prescribed procedure for approval, like this applicant is doing. Years ago, when I was on the DRC, there was a house at twelve twenty five Oakwood, where the applicant did not seek approval and they just went ahead and hired a contractor, installed a very poor, you know, Home Depot type product. It looks horrible. City planning staff denied their request to keep the roof. They appealed it to DRC. We denied the appeal and then they appealed it to planning commission. And they also upheld the denial. But four years now have gone by and the roof is still there. I think that sends a very confusing message to our residents. And I think in particular, when you have applicants like this that are trying to do this by the book, I think the city needs to look at that. So as to this particular installation, the most important thing to me is that the material is true to the architectural style. And I will make the argument that what is true to this architectural style is not shake. It is shingle. There is a difference. One is split, one is sawn. There's a very different profile and aesthetic to it. And you, I think you would be hard pressed to find shake on an authentic colonial revival home. And my argument is going to be that composition shingle actually in its appearance is closer to the appearance of sawn wood shingle than is a cementaceous product like the Boral Cedar Light or the other cementaceous tiles that are on the pre-approved list. I think even natural shake is, is not as good as in appearance and being true to that style as would the composition shingle. Because a home of this style would have shingle material, whether it's natural or not. It would not have shake. So I, I can support the request for the appeal and I would approve the use of the roofing material that the applicant is requesting with the conditions noted by staff in the agenda report and on the pre-approved materials list combined. So that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. My, I'm muted again. Thank you, Commissioner Dustin. Commissioner Wright?
Thank you. Really appreciated everything Commissioner Dustin said. It was very helpful. In particular, I'm so pleased to hear that prior, now interrupted work, but nonetheless, the work you were doing, that you have found this, these materials to be vastly improved. Because I have many a horror story from yes, some years past of these materials that have failed pretty spectacularly and pretty extensively, if that's a word. So, but I have read and I have heard and I have seen the improvement. And I'm glad to hear our fellow commissioner reassure me that that's true. And here I do agree with the appellants that this does not, wood shake does not appear to be a character defining feature for their colonial revival property. And if you look at our design guidelines, some of them will actually talk about a wood roof as being character defining. And to that, I might disagree with you a little bit, Commissioner Dustin, because I've always felt like Cape Cod is a perfect example of where we would want wood shake. And to me, that is definitely kind of a character defining. And our residential design guidelines actually mention wood shake for, a wood shake for Cape Cod. Compare that with colonial revival where they say, yes, it should be gable or hipped, but they don't mention anything about the material. So I do think that's telling. And if you look at our other residential design guidelines about roof treatment, you can also see that it does like wood, but it likes, recognizes that there are other materials and wants natural materials that will, to your point, be, that would be consistent with the architectural integrity of the house design, their harmony of natural setting, their high quality and durability, I'm reading this, and make sure that anything on the roof has the, contributes significantly to maintaining the overall quality and understanding the elegance of our city. Because we were a city, of course, of all wood shake and tile roofs from way back, from way back when. And it was the elegance of our city. So if you look at that sort of the overall thinking, when you look at our residential design guidelines, roof treatment, generally speaking, then specific type of houses, you do see, see some, some care more. Some styles seem to require more of a wood shake than others. So I could, I could support it from that standpoint. I do have one caveat. May not be a good caveat, but I, but I present that to colleagues anyway. Here's what's troubling me about this appeal. As you've all said, this is a future historic district. It's been picked as a future historic district. And the question, and I understand it, and the concern by the majority of the design review is that having a composite roof would somehow take away from that historic nature of our beautiful city. To me, that's a question for council. That's more of a policy question about whether our council, who are the policymakers, we are their recommending body, whether our council thinks that it is so important for a future historic district to maintain the type of roofs that they've had historically. Again, yes, I know, we would still be able to look at each individual house, hopefully by through design review and make distinctions. But we all know, once we approve something, once we let this first one go, mostly first one as composite, our city, what Janie and Johnny can do, everybody thinks they can do. So I don't know that it would, that we would be able to stop the floodways. And I have a lot of chases going on in my head. But, so that would be my one caveat. If we were to deny this, they obviously could appeal. I'm assuming they would appeal. It would go to city council and city council would be able to make what I might consider a policy decision. If we grant their appeal, I'm pretty confident that no one else would appeal. And I know that says something in and of itself, but let's face it, we are much more, we, we are supposed to be the ones who look forward. So we're the ones who are supposed to protect our city, no matter what certain residents may think. So that's my one, my one little thought about whether it is our council that should be making this first decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Chow?
Yes, thank you. So my thoughts are that the applicants, the appellants should in fact be applauded for following all the guidelines that have been set forth by the city. That is, you know, something that I do appreciate residents do. And I'm a little bit torn in light of that fact because, because everything, because this is on the approved, pre-approved list. You know, my initial reaction should be that it should be approved. But we are contending with the idea that this is potentially historic in nature. And so that is a huge concern that gives me reservation or pause related to granting this particular application, especially what Commissioner Wright had just indicated. So with regard to that, I want to also, I guess it would have been ideal for to see what the TL sample looked like. I don't know that we were provided with a sample of the TL that is proposed to be used on the roof. And, you know, I would like to visually compare it to see what it would look like to existing wood shake. So that would be something that I wish we had an opportunity to look at. But with that being said, I'm a little torn by this and I would probably err on the side of caution and deny the application with regard to the historical nature of it, not that, and only on that basis.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Okazaki?
I, my initial thinking, and it still prevails that the, as others have pointed out, the applicant has followed all the rules. And even though this area is being considered a historical district, it is not yet established. And city staff has concluded that the, that the roofing material or the type of shingles that we use is not a deciding factor of the, that affects the historical district designation. The roof is immaterial in this case. I do also want to point out that I think the planning commissioners better be pretty sure that their decision is not deleterious to the overall project. Project. In my opinion, which is very important to replace. I don't like wood, wood shingles. I think the fire. Uh, resistance and retardant feature that people talk about is insufficient. Because they could still catch fire and, 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 and we want to protect the occupant as well as the neighborhood and the city as a whole. I personally would like to see all the wood roofs replaced if we could. Uh, because I think it's not safe. And, and the fact that. You know, their. Uh. Consideration that the, we're going to be asking the homeowners to spend. Uh. Fifty-five thousand dollars more than, 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 than something that's already a pre-approved. Uh. On a list that we furnish the owner. Uh, I, I think we better have a good reason to. Ask him to, you know. To do something like that. I, I mean, the roof only costs twenty-five thousand to, to go with the. When the city approved a, a certain T landmark TL roofing material. Now, uh Howard pointed out that. He thought that the Landmark Pro was more. Uh. Appropriate in terms of the looks, that it looks better than the uh, the Landmark TL. So. I, I, I would uh hope that the homeowner. Uh, would consider that if in, if the commissioners approve a uh. Uh, maybe a, a Landmark Pro. Uh, in addition to a, a. Certain. T landmark TL as an option uh for the owner, if it doesn't cost that much more, you know, uh, that would be a, a sort of a. In consideration of even i- uh, a closer, closer, uh, I guess, uh. Conformist to this, to the look of the, the architectural look of the, the roof. Not affecting the entire building, but you know, going beyond that. Due to our consideration that we want to, you know. Be respectful of the potential historical district, even though it's not required and it's not because it's not established yet. Uh, and, and, and uh. Maybe the city council should take a position. Uh, on that, knowing that uh, uh, we do have a. Uh, city council member listening in on this, uh, maybe they could address this issue, you know, given that there's a historical district. You know, what standard should be applied? If the homeowners are following all the rules and regulation uh. Given to them. Using a pre-approved list. You know. Why are we denying this uh request? And why did the uh, design review? Uh, folks uh deny this uh roofing material. But anyway. I'm of the opinion that uh we should approve the. Composition shingle requested by the homeowner. I think. It looks fine to me, uh, uh, but if Howard thinks that the Landmark Pro is better. Uh, I would hope that the homeowners and the board would consider uh. Giving them an option to consider that. If it doesn't cost extre- extremely more uh than the uh, the one that they select so far. Thank you.
Thank you, uh. Vice Chair Brody.
Yeah, just let me uh. Uh, start by saying that I think moving from. A wood shake roof to something that looks very much like a wood shake roof is the goal here. And I think uh, the applicant should be commended for attempting to do that. Uh, as pointed out by uh John Dustin and I, believe me. Uh, this is just one of many things that happened due to COVID. Uh, we were going to take a, a list. Uh, of acceptable roofing materials and upgrade it and see where we are. Uh, unfortunately, because of COVID, that never really came to fruition. Uh, and so we're left with a pre-approved list that has some inherent flaws in it. One of the flaws. Really concerns uh. The landmark TL. I don't know if you're aware of it, if your roofer has told you. But uh, there was a class action suit on landmark TL. Uh, because it didn't live up to the advertising. Uh, statements put out by the manufacturer. And subsequent to that. A product called Landmark Pro was put out and that product. Is a tremendous success. All you have to do is Google. And look at the, either the iteration of it on a roof or see how it compares. With regard to landmark TL, it's, it's a major improvement and their only major difference. The significant difference is the thickness. It's a bit thicker and I mean, we're talking about on these composition roofs. Uh, three sixteenths to a quarter inch, but it, and wood shingles, it's like a half inch. If it could move up significantly towards that half inch. Uh, objective, you get depending again on the installation competency of your people. You can get a remarkably better roofing material. Uh. And so my thought is. Even though we do have uh. Landmark TL on our list. I'm sure if we had a, an opportunity and we didn't have COVID and we reviewed it. It would probably be taken off the list and Landmark Pro would be put on. And so my uh objective in this matter is first of all. Um, to have the condition that it be approved with Landmark Pro. And I don't think the price is significantly different. Uh, it is more expensive with Landmark Pro, but nothing like you would pay for uh. A, a wood product at all. Uh, so that's my thought uh coming in and, and we really ought to uh get back to uh. COVID or not COVID of looking at that pre-approved list and start updating it. And a lot what we can do is, is through research, talking to roofers and the like. Uh, I don't think COVID should be an excuse anymore. Uh, this can go on for years. Uh. In any event, uh, my thought is uh to make a motion. At first availability to uh. To make a condition that uh the installation be with Landmark Pro. Uh, and that uh, the appeal uh be granted with that condition.
Okay, uh, thank you, Vice Chair Brody. Um. I also uh support the applicant's um request for this appeal. Um, what I, what just kept resonating with me was the fact that it was denied based on. Potential historic significance. Um, and I agree with what everybody has said with regards to the like-for-like design um. Moving away from wood shingle. So I'm not, I'm not going to go there. I'm just going to talk about the historic aspect of it. Um, especially since at least Commissioner Chow, you, it was a concern of yours and, and rightfully so. Um, I. I'm very supportive of our, of our historic survey. I felt that it was a long time coming and I um. Uh. I like what was determined from it. I think that it was um, well, uh. Well thought, well researched and, you know, certain districts have been identified. Um, as far as I know, our survey has never been quote-unquote ratified by the city council. So it is a matter of um. You know, that these areas could be considered historic, but they are not yet. Um, which I, since uh our. Planning Commission liaison from the city council is on here, I will say it would be something really. Wonderful for city council to move to ratify our survey because I think that it gives us greater protection. Um. So. If, so I, I want to say a couple of things. First of all, I keep looking at the applicants, um, the attachments that were provided. Um, specifically nine five seven Afton Road, which has composite shingle. Um, I do not think. Hopefully the person is not on the line. I do not think it is as attractive as a house as the applicants and it has the composite shingle. It is near identical to the applicant's house. Um. And I say that because. As we look at the architecture and we look at the historic aspect of it, if one house. Is, which is in their legal neighborhood can have this, it seems to me that, you know, their house should as well. I have the survey open right now because I refer to it often. Um, while their district is a potential historic neighborhood. Um, there are quite a few houses within that neighborhood that are identified as individually historic. There is, is not one of them. And that means a lot to me. Um, if this house had a significant Sammerino resident that had grown up in it and gone on to do. Amazing things or uh what, you know, was. Something entirely different that it could be pinpointed as being historically significant. I might have a very different opinion, but I think that the decision coming from DRC. Of this being a potential historic area, um, while that may be true, it. I mean, I, I hate to, I hate to say this because I have very high regard for our other committees, but this just, it felt. Punitive, especially in light of the other um, the other uh agenda items that were before them that night. That they did get approved with similar roofing material. So uh, for that reason, I have, I will make a long story even longer. Um, I. I would support the applicant's uh. I never know how to say it, but I would support, I would support. Reversing the denial and the applicant's request for this appeal. Um, so uh, I don't know if we need to have any further discussion amongst us commissioners or if there is. A motion on the table. Oh, I will also say, um, and this may be for um, uh, Camelia or um, Director Figaro. I don't know if we're allowed to make a condition that we can just blanket approve an item that is currently not on our pre-approved list, but. Cause I know that um Vice Chair Brody is probably going to do that. And so I would like guidance if that is even allowed.
Uh, Chair Person Boyle, uh, DRC has the ability to. Approve uh material that is not on the pre-approved list. So therefore it is an option for the planning commission to suggest and approve. An item that is, or a material that is not in the pre-approved list. Whether you want to have that conversation with the applicant or not, that's, that's up to you. That's your prerogative, but you, you do have the ability to. Uh, condition the project.
Can we make this, can, uh, only, I don't know who's going to make the motion, but can the motion be that we um. What we approve the applicant's uh.
You, you can support the, you can support the appeal with the condition that the material be X, Y, and Z.
And, and we can say they can choose between either this um TL or the Pro. But we would approve the Pro if that's what they decide.
That's not.
Well, well, what, what, what the motion is or isn't, that's up to you, but. You do have the ability to either give a choice or to condition it to a specific material.
Okay, let me make the motion if I may, uh.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, let me represent to you the applicant. That the difference between TL and Pro is thickness. And uh, you could look that up. It's all over the net. Pro is a better product. It translates well. It looks more like shake. They are manufactured in the same place with the same materials. And it's a slight upgrade or more than a slight upgrade in terms of visual appearance than TL. And so uh, if that's acceptable to you, uh, a Pro, I would make uh. A motion uh to.
But before you do that, I'm sorry, before you make a motion. Can I ask a question, Chair? I'm sorry to interrupt, but before.
Of course. Yeah, of course.
Ask Commissioner Dustin, since you were also, sorry to put you on the spot, but since you were also part of this um committee that was looking into it. If you share the same view as um Vice Chair Bro- Brody.
And I do, I, my recollection was that, you know, sort of the next step or the next direction that. City council had given staff was to. Look at putting these new composition shingle products. Up for vote at the DRC and then it would come to us for approval or denial. Um, and, and the, the, the Pro was. One of those that we were um recommending as a, as a work group, not, you know, in any.
I understand, I understand. Thank you, but that just, just.
I'll just, I'll just add another comment for some of the other commissioners who may be reluctant to see the comp shingle as something worthy for a historic. District or whatever. You know, people think comp shingle is a modern product. They have been using asphalt impregnated felt in New England since the eighteen eighties. Um, so it is not really that new of a product. Um, so just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
And just to clarify.
Motion please.
Wait, oh, I guess, sorry, Commissioner Chow, just one, one more comment.
Sorry, and just to clarify, maybe I misunderstood. This uh, this property is not deemed historical in nature and has, has not been. It, it hasn't been deemed that yet.
This part, this property has not been called out individually for historic significance. It is part of a neighborhood. That is being considered a historic district.
Okay, but it not, it does not yet have that designation uh at the state level nor at the city level.
No, it does not have, it does not have that designation anywhere.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That is, that's great for me. Thank you.
Uh, Chair, Chair Boyle, again, um.
Yeah.
Uh, before the commission uh makes a motion, again, staff would suggest that perhaps. Uh, there'd be some uh communication with the applicant as to what, as to the uh. The ability to install the, the material that will be suggested. Uh, we don't know, staff is not aware of the cost price, so we don't know if it would be more expensive or less expensive, but. Uh, that, that would be something that perhaps the planning commission might want to um discuss with the applicant.
So, um.
I'm going to ask the applicant whether uh, the Pro, and I'm sure they've done their research on it. Uh, if we approve that tonight with the uh condition, whether that would be acceptable to him and that'll uh, and, and uh. Uh, that'll pretty well decide, uh, I'm, I imagine where we're going. Uh, what he wants to do is have a composition. Uh, a roof that uh works well and looks good, lasts a long time and looks like. Shingle, looks like wood shingles. And this does it. TL, not so much.
So to, to the applicant, I mean, are, uh, I guess. The, it's being posed to you. Do you? Are you open to us? I guess, including the Pro or, you know, having the Pro be approved in this condition, in this particular. Application?
I, I, I think we would really like the option. I mean, with the, I think this is really good information from uh Commissioner Brody. Um, if this is something that looks better and does the job better, then we'll absolutely go for it. We just don't know, you know, we've had a hard time finding contractors. Uh, we know that what we have now will work for us. You know, hopefully, given, given some delays. Um, but, but we will absolutely go back. I- if the Pro is an option for us and we find out that it can be in fact installed and sourced. We'll go and do that. Um, I would just really request that, that we get the choice between the two. Um, just because, you know, if we have to go through this process again, because for whatever reason, the, the Pro can't be sourced by the contractors. It, it will be, it'll be a real shame. Um.
So, so Vice Chair Brody, why don't you make your motion that um, in such a way that it gives them a choice between the two products to support them and their.
Yeah, um. Certainly, uh, you can come back if Pro is a problem in that respect, which I, I can almost guarantee you it won't be. Uh, you probably have more problems getting TL now than you would Pro. Uh, TL is the drop-back product. Uh, Pro is the uh sourced and uh sought-after product. Uh, I would make uh, a, a motion uh to uh. Grant the uh appeal with the uh sole condition. That the product to be installed is not landmark TL, but is landmark Pro. Uh, and certainly, if you have a problem with that, you could always come back to us.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Do we have, can we not give them a choice? That's what they're requesting is a choice between the two so that they don't have to come back to us.
I understand that. Uh, that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Howard, can I ask a clarification? Are you going to specify a color?
Well, if, if they want to continue with the color they're using now or burnt sienna, which is the most common one. And most replicative of the uh. Uh, of the.
I just, oh, the only reason I ask is that they're asking for Shenandoah and I just know that in the Pro series. The actual name of the color is Max Def Shenandoah, so.
Okay.
And, and I also think there ought to be conditions. Similar to what were conditioned with the TL on the pre-approved list. There's a whole list of conditions, including. There's a whole list of conditions, including the valleys need to be cut, not woven. Uh you know, the staff is familiar with those, but I would not be comfortable not having those conditions.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to include all those conditions.
Is there a second? I don't see a second on this motion. So is that, so I don't, is there another motion?
Can an alternate make a motion?
I don't, I don't think so because you're not a voting member tonight.
I, can we have a little more discussion maybe?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
Speaking of um discussion, uh just in the spirit of helping Vice Chair Brody's motion, uh I'm not suggesting we should ever make a motion in one way or another for this particular reason, but just as clarification, uh if we were to grant only the Pro and they found it wasn't sufficient, our decision is appealable. And they could certainly make the argument that it's three times as much money, whatever the argument might be, and ask for relief that way. I'm not suggesting we make the motion for that reason. I'm just giving you that as, as.
I, I mean, I definitely appreciate that. I just feel as though I, I don't know what to do in this circumstance. The applicant obviously would love a choice between the two and doesn't know what the best option is right now. And I feel like having to go get on our agenda, uh you know, on our calendar and appeal again. Again, it just seems very punitive to a family who has been doing the right thing since they first found the leak. And so I'm, I'm, that's why I'm, that's why I asked Vice Chair Brody if there's a way to uh state the motion in such a way that doesn't force them into something that they know nothing about right now, which is the landmark Pro. And do something that, you know, they can eat, like, working with staff, they have the option of doing either. Because we don't even know the proper colored, not color, but you know, some of the things that, the other options on the Pro. Like, we're not specifying that, like, you know, so that's why I'm just like, I don't wanna force them into a hand that they can't, whatever.
I'm agreeing with everything, I'm agreeing with everything you say, and it makes me wonder and, and I agree that they've done everything right and it's taken a long time, so don't yell at me when I suggest this, but what about a continuance, a one-month continuance?
And that's what I'm trying to avoid, uh Jerry. Um and and by that, I mean, they won't like the Pro if they do their research and they get approved tonight. And they say, hey, we got a problem here. They could be back right away. Uh and we could, we could do something with the motion uh to allow them, if you talk about alternatives, Chair. The alternative would be if they find out that the landmark Pro has problems with regard to finding an installer, or it doesn't work for them, or the price is not right. They have the alternative of coming back at the next meeting. I'm okay with that, too.
Director Figaro, can you give us guidance as to what are, what, how should we do this? I know that I'm, I I just don't want to put the applicant in a position where they're constantly having to come before us or, you know, and get, like, they have said when we open, per your request, we open to their opinion on what they wanted, and they said that they want, they would like to have a choice between the two. So, and to research further. So is there a way to set up a motion that allows them to have the choice between the two? And us approving either one?
Can I take a stab at that?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the, to up, to uphold the appeal.
To approve the appeal.
Yes, I, I move to approve the appeal with the condition that the applicants provide two bids to city staff uh indicating pricing, a, a price option on the, the landmark Pro. And um that's, after that time, they can choose between installation of the landmark TL as requested or the landmark Pro in the Max Def Shenandoah color with the same conditions uh as stipulated by staff on the pre-approved list and in the agenda report.
Well, who will such? I don't understand. Who approves then the choice between TL or, or Pro? If they're submitting.
The applicant, the applicant will make that decision. My only concern is, is that I want them to at least make a good faith effort to get a price on the product and to see whether it's available. If they're if, if they, if they can come to city staff and say, here, we got two bids from two different contractors on this product in this color with this kind of installation, uh and we're not comfortable with this price point, we wanna go with the original TL. Then they can do that without having to come back to us.
Well, that's a compromised position, one I'm not all that comfortable with. On the other hand, uh I'm trying to move this forward.
I'll say, I'll second Commissioner Dustin's motion.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Uh Camelia, can we have a a vote? Can we do the roll call on the vote?
Well, shouldn't we first make sure that the applicant is okay with getting those two bids and, and moving forward on this? Are, are you okay with that concept?
Um, yeah, I mean.
That's all you had to say is, yeah.
Well, my, my only concern is if, is if, uh is if we literally can't get a quote because, on the other one, because um I, I, yeah, I mean, I totally appreciate where you guys are going with this. I'm just thinking through that, you know, we, we've gone back to various uh folks and they've just not been able to quote. Some of us won't give us a quote for which angle, for instance, but if, if the commissioner thinks that that is a very unlikely outcome and that anyone who can quote me on the TL can quote me on the Pro, then.
Absolutely.
And I think also if we have enough time to get the quotes, because sometimes like contractors are very busy, it's really hard to, like, we have to really stay on them till I get back to us. So if we have the time to get the quotes, we are happy to do.
All right, thank you.
And, and just to clarify, this is going to be brought back in a resolution as uh Camelia stated at the beginning of the of the uh discussion.
Of course.
Okay, so.
Motion in a second?
Yeah, there's a motion and a second. Can we have, uh, Camelia, can you please take the roll calls?
Um Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
And alternate Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Okay, five oh vote.
Fantastic. Thank you. And uh to the applicant, thank you for your patience. While we deliberated that, we appreciate uh your time. So, thank you.
We can get a roof.
Yeah, we. We're priming your consideration.
I do.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so then moving on. Uh, we are uh agenda item number two, the adoption of the denial resolution number PCR twenty-two dash oh-three for design review case number DR twenty-one dash fourteen HP. I don't, I don't know why these always stump me a little. We don't, there isn't a staff report. It's just the approval of the resolution. So are there any comments on the resolution?
I'm sorry, what agenda item is this to?
Agenda item number two, the, it's the adoption of our denial to D, DRC.
Thank you. I was just gonna find it in the bookmark section on my PDF file here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll move to approve a resolution PCR twenty-two dash zero three.
I'll second.
Thank you, and can we have our vote?
Just for the sake of the minutes, uh Commissioner Wright moved it and then um Vice Chair Brody seconded it. And uh for the vote, um Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
If Jerry's okay with it, I'm okay with it, yes.
And then I'm assuming that it's gonna go to also, the vote's gonna go to alternate, um can remember, I mean, uh Planning Commissioner Chow?
I believe so.
Okay, so all the votes will, okay, good, okay. So then that's a five oh vote for approval of the res- the resolution.
Did we?
Thank you.
Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to agenda item number three, the adoption of the denial resolution number PCR twenty-two oh-six for design review case number DR twenty-one dash eighty at eighteen sixty-five Southwest Rebels Avenue. Are there any comments on this or a motion?
I did recommend a couple of changes to staff. I don't know if you they were just type those type things. Uh how do you like to handle that staff? Would you just, you're just gonna make those changes because they're, they're certifications, if you will.
The, the changes were, the changes were typographical and, and minor in nature. They don't change the content, so uh staff feels comfortable if, if uh, if the commission makes a motion and moves forward.
Thank you. I move to the, I move to approve resolution PCR twenty-two dash zero six.
Second.
And the vote, please?
Once again, it was uh moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Dustin, and for the vote, um Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
And alternate Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
I will vote.
Thank you. And moving on to agenda item number four, the approval of our minutes from our June twenty-second meeting.
Move to.
Thank you. And can we have our vote?
Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes, and I'm very, very pleased to see minutes coming back. Thank you.
Alternate Commissioner Chow?
Yes.
I will vote.
Thank you. Uh and then for the moment we've all been waiting for uh agenda item number five, we are due for our planning commission reorganization. The current chair and vice chair, me and Vice Chair Brody have served our one-year term, and we are ready for reorganization.
I'd like to move for uh consideration of Vice Chair Brody as chair.
I would second that.
So for the vote, um Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Vice Chair Brody?
Yes.
Um Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
And alternate Commissioner Chow?
I guess, was that a yes?
He's muted.
Oh.
Apology, that's an absolute yes.
Okay.
And then also.
Are, are there any discussions before you voted? Because you didn't ask for any.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I uh, last time we did not have any discussions, so no, I'm so sorry, I did not call for a discussion.
Only because I don't get.
Uh oh, he's muted.
Only because I don't get to vote, I wanted to say I support Howard being the president. Just, just for your information, Howard.
Thank you very much, although I'm not running for president, James.
Along those lines.
Appreciate your support.
I would like to nominate, uh even though he isn't present, I would like to nominate uh Commissioner Chang for vice chair of the planning commission.
I'd second that.
Thank you. And I guess.
Discussion would include my comments and support, too.
Okay, thank you. And then can we have our vote?
Yes, um Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Um, not Chair Boyle, but hi, let's say, uh Chair Brody.
Yeah.
You're yesterday's news.
Wow, I mean, just like that, like that, I am chopped liver.
Uh yes, either as vice chair or chair, it doesn't matter.
Sorry, um Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Hey, uh Commissioner Dustin?
Yes.
And alternate Commissioner, um Chow?
Yes.
Thank you. May I say something, either chair or both chairs? Um I just wanted to thank Chair Boyle for her exceptional leadership this past year. It's always so difficult through COVID and everything else, and I just thought you did a terrific job and I go and one really appreciated and high standard for you, although I know now Chair Brody, you've had a lot of experience and look forward to, to your uh year of reign as well. But thank you so much, Chair Boyle.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright, and thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to also comment, Shelley, you did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it all. And um, yeah, I don't know what to say, except it's I mean, I'm not going anywhere, but it's definitely, it's been a fun, it's been a fun year. So, thank you for allowing me to um, you know, have this role, and it's been very enjoyable. Um, I guess with that, uh Chair Brody, you have to finish out this meeting.
When I was three years old, my first language was not English. Um so I'll, I'll, I was about to say, Alice is frantic. We're done.
We have agenda item number six. We have the directors, we have the director's report.
Oh, yeah, one of the directors report.
We need Commissioner Boyle's wisdom to keep us on track still.
I, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, thank you. Uh congratulations, uh distinguished planning commissioner Boyle.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Uh I wanna thank, I first, I wanna personally thank you for the leadership that uh you've shown in the six months that I've been here at the city. Uh you've been a source uh for knowledge and historical perspective and for helping me understand the way things are here in San Marino, so I really appreciate that. Uh Vice Chair, actually Chair Brody. Uh I also want to thank you because in the past six months, equally, you've also assisted me in my uh my short stay here with the city uh moving forward, and I look forward to working with you and your leadership role and uh continue to work with distinguished planning commissioner Boyle as well, and as well as everybody else who has been a great help, everyone, everyone in this uh commission. Uh with that, um I do have three pieces of information. One is bad, two are good, so I'll start with the bad.
Oh, no.
Unfortunately, uh the community development department is losing another key member. Uh our permit technician, Heather Fisk. Uh her partner uh was offered a really good uh career opportunity back east, and, and so uh she know, she will no longer be with the city. Uh she tenured her resignation uh earlier this week. You may not know, but permit technicians really play a vital role here with building and safety. You know, when you approve a project, when DRC approves a project, you know, they're the ones that interface with the general public after um projects are approved, and she was, she is really customer service friendly. Um she was trained, you know, she, she had about eight months into the job, so we're really gonna lose that stability. And so again, uh to all of you and to the community, I hope you bear with us. Uh the good thing is that the city council and the uh most updated uh budget but did it for another permit technician, so we were already recruiting for that, so hopefully we can get two uh recruits from that particular recruitment. Uh at the same time, we're recruiting for the senior planner and for the management analyst and court enforcement officer, so uh we're, we're moving through and hopefully we can get some talent here pretty soon. Uh, good news is that we have successfully uh have uh acquired the talents of two up-and-coming assistant planners. They were, one will start on August first, Eric G. And on August eighth, we will have another assistant planner, Savag Simosian. So Camelia is gonna get some help pretty soon. Uh as you know, Camelia's been doing a wonderful job of interfacing with the general public. She's been the only full-time uh planner with us, so she's gonna have some help pretty soon. And um the third piece of news, good news, is that the uh consultant city arborist picked up the third and final batch of the backlog of a tree, of a tree permit removal, uh tree permits. And so I'm not saying we're cut off. And so I'm not saying we're cut off, but we're in good position. I want to thank the general public for their patience and understanding. And hopefully we can get an urban forester pretty soon so that they can take command of those application reviews. That concludes my director's report and looking forward to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So Shelley, one of us is going to have to say so long, goodbye.
Yeah, I was going to say, I can tell that Mayor Jacobowski wants to say something.
Um, I, I wanted to extend my appreciation and thanks, as everyone had already mentioned. And particularly to Camellia, you have been handling this single-handedly and you've been very gracious and you have just been sucking it up and doing the work. So thank you for your exemplary style. I also want to remind the body, I have taken notes through the meeting this evening. And as a commission rather than a committee, you have the right to make recommendations to city council. I would encourage you in going forward, and I know Director Figaro is, is very committed to his position. As you have your prep meetings, if the chair and the vice chair through the members want to put anything on an agenda that you would like to officially pass to the city council, it may be an important way to move that issue forward. And then Director Figaro could bring it to us and we could discuss it as a council. I think you've got some good recommendations in going forward. Separate from that, Director Figaro can also come to us independently, but I think it carries a lot of weight coming from a commission body. As you know, a committee cannot do the same thing. You are just awesome in your commitment, the way you each put the effort into your work, the background that you share in your discussion just takes my breath away. Thank you all. You're really an awesome group.
Thank you. Okay, if no one's going to say anything, I'll say it.
You're the chair.
See you next month.
Adieu.
Adieu.
Thank you.